Well, hello. My name is Jordan Hayden. I use she/her pronouns. And I am a Berry City resident. I'm really excited to be here today with two candidates running for Berry City Council. And those candidates include Beth Hill Gardner of Ward One and Sam Stockwell of Ward Three. So we are going to get into some conversation today about why they're running and why you might want to vote for them. Alright, so my first question for you both, and I'll let you decide who goes first, is I would love for you to introduce yourself and give just a brief history of your connection to Berry. Sam, do you want to start?
Sure. I am a sitting Ward Three councillor. And this would be, if I'm elected, it'll be my third term on council. So I've spent, I spent the last four years really studying the river and how it works, and what the flood damage is and existing plans. So that's been my most current experience, is being immersed in the flood and what it has done to the Ward Three, which is the ward I represent. It's hit hardest there. And my investment is in making sure that the residents there have as much flood mitigation as possible. And move, that's a huge part of what I'm running. That, and I went to every river training, which was so interesting. And I don't wanna, I don't, you know, I think for someone else to do that, it would be really hard for them to get up to speak.
Alan, thank you. How about you, Beth?
Well, my connection with Berry is that when we, my, I'm married to somebody who grew up in Berry. My mother grew up in Montpelier, but please don't hold that against me. So I have ties to the area from way back. But when we were first married, we lived in Berry. And my husband, Bernie Drown, was the librarian at the Aldrich Library. And I worked at the Granite Bank, which was still a locally owned bank at that time. And I loved Berry. And we, we left Berry, I'm also an Episcopal priest, I'm retired, but we left Berry for a parish posting, probably about thirty-five years ago. But we were always thinking that we would come back after I retired. And then two years ago, we did. Right, we bought the house in September and the next July was the first round of flooding. And one of the things that was really powerful for me, coming back to this community that I love, but that is, of course, different, because it's been thirty-five years. And think about, you know, even just the technology, what's happened in that time. But it was really wonderful to see how people really just pulled together. First, right after the flood, the rain stopped and people were out there in their boots and their gloves and their shovels and trying to get the residents dug out and downtown businesses up and running again. Well, much as I love Montpelier because of my grandparents and my mom and all that, they were still wringing their hands and clutching their pearls and saying, "What are we going to do?" So Berry has a really wonderful get down and do it attitude. So that's really part of why I wanted to get involved. And the other part is that having some involvement, watching the council meeting dynamic, I realized I've spent a lot of time in nonprofits and church communities designing processes for good decision-making, good community-based decision-making that takes in everybody's point of view. And that's not actually what we have right now in the council. So I'm really determined to get in there and, you know, change some of the processes and change some of the structures so that we have a better way of incorporating and listening to a multiplicity of voices.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much for that. Really appreciate that context, the background of who you are and where you're getting into this. It's all very important. And I feel like Beth, you've sort of bled into the next question here, which is why are you running for city council? I think you've already tapped into that pretty well.
I think, wait, I should give Sam a chance to answer.
Alright, I'll pass it over to Sam then.
I'm running because in, because I worked in human services for a really long time. And a lot of my work was here in Berry City. I live in Berry City. I have for the last ten years. And I know intimately the lives of people who have a lot of challenges. And I, I feel the city can do better by those residents in particular. So I have an idea about flood mitigation effects and I have an idea about housing. And at the heart of that is that I think people who have struggles need more support. The municipality definitely cannot do all of that. We can bring people together and create a stronger city that's more responsive to the needs of all the citizens.
Excellent. Thank you. So it might be hard for you to determine the answer to this question, but I'll ask it anyway. I'm wondering what you think is the most pressing issue in Berry City today? And how would you address it if you were elected or reelected? Beth, we'll start with you.
Well, I have to confess that I'm a process geek. And I, I see a lot of issues that it's hard to prioritize. I mean, there are things like flood mitigation, there are things like growing the tax base. And, and a lot of this stuff is, you know, interrelated. And prioritizing it is something that I would love to have more community input on, the process of prioritizing what's important. So I think that part of what I would start with is the structure. I've heard from people in, mostly in Ward One, who are having conversations, that there are people, you know, bright, intelligent, motivated, good-hearted people who have been on committees and get off the committees because there's not adequate communication out of the committees. There's not a good charge to the committees. They don't know what they're supposed to do. And they, they feel like they're spinning their wheels. They come up and make recommendations to the, you know, city manager and nothing happens. And, you know, there's a lot of frustration. And that's one place I think I'd start, because I know how to do that. And that's a big step in figuring out how to get community input so that we can do some of the other things, flood mitigation support for the residents who have, you know, difficulties and needs that we can help in housing. With all kinds of other related things. So I think I'd start with that governmental structure piece. And, you know, also because I think that's something that's within the purview of the council. And it's hard to define that and, you know, without a little more help from the community.
Absolutely. Sam?
I think the most pressing issue in Berry is housing. And I think the most pressing issue in Vermont is housing. One of my coworkers was saying that when, you know, the lock to her apartment building was broken, and so people were curling up in the stairs. And when she got up in the morning to go down the stairs, there were people sleeping in the stairwell. That seems to me unconscionable that we allow that. There's just not enough housing. There's not enough shelters. There's not enough places that fit the needs of people now. You know, we need duplexes and triplexes and tiny houses and pretty much everything. We have a lot of great gorgeous Victorians. It's not going to work for a ton of people. So we need to create more housing options. And we need to make sure that people who are low and moderate income, who have been essentially squeezed out of the housing market, have a way in. That, I think, is one of the great challenges facing this. How can we create, how can we expand Habitat for Humanity or, you know, support Downstreet? There are some quibbles, I think, with some of the elements of their, of the way their programs are structured. But it's the best chance for people to have a real home. And if you have a real home, you can put down roots in your community. And I know that people who are unhoused tend to move from one shelter to another. They are moved or they end up in a motel. That's, that, to me, is the first issue. And in Berry, infrastructure is the second issue. And I guess housing, infrastructure, I'd say those are the primary issues. And flood mitigation.
Yeah, you both highlighted some pretty important elements. And I'm grateful that you're both thinking about so much of this. I'm curious if there's anything else on your wish list of things you'd like to accomplish if you are elected or reelected. Beth?
Um, I was, when I was listening to you, you know, I agree with you about housing. And, you know, I was remembering, years ago, I was on the entry community loan fund board. And we did a lot of work with around housing and around empowering people to enter the housing market. And one of the things that we, that I have some experience with is cooperative models for duplexes, triplexes and apartment buildings, where people are, you know, where the loan fund got involved and helped organize the tenants. So they made an LLC. And they, you know, they had all ownership in it. And they worked up, they, they bought, they got equity. But they also didn't, you know, when they sold their piece, they got their piece of equity out, but the house remained affordable. One of the problems with, you know, it's just a, you know, it's a silly quibble in a way, because I agree with your point about once people are in the housing market, it's good. But, you know, Habitat builds a house and the person who builds the house and lives there, when they sell it, it doesn't always remain, you know, the prices have gone up. It doesn't always remain affordable. So, you know, that, that would be something I'd love to work with you on, housing stuff.
Sounds like fun to me.
Yeah. Sam, what else would you like to accomplish if you're elected?
I have a couple of soft goals, hard to measure. I want us to make council a kinder, gentler place so that everyone feels welcome there. You know, that, that was one of the things that really surprised me when I was first on council, was that all the people I knew in Berry City, none of them came to council. Even one of the issues that will be really important to them. Like, but sometimes I understood because they're working two jobs. You know, they're renting a crappy place that where the heating is iffy. So I understood the pressures in their life, but I thought some folks should be able to show up here. But after I was on council for a while, I could see it could be very uncomfortable if you were not part of the existing power structure. It would be difficult. So I would, that's one of the things I'd really like to see is a, is a kinder, gentler community. And I would like to have more walkable streets, which actually is, it does require some investment. But just even thinking about, how do we make, how do we make this neighborhood more walkable? Because if you're walking around, you meet your neighbors. That's strengthening. It makes places safer. So that, to me, is also really important. And I hope we can do some of that.
Sounds good to me. Alright.
I'll keep with that too.
Alright, so now I'm going to ask you both about your thoughts on some recent Berry City issues. I'm going to name a list of them, so do not feel like you need to respond to all of them. Maybe just pick one or two or whatever resonates most with you, okay? And I, I just would like to get your thoughts. Alright, so talking about security cameras, public safety, the New Berry building, the Berlin Street Bridge, flood mitigation and housing. So maybe take a moment, let that simmer. Think about any thoughts, feelings, comments you have on any of those recent issues. And then, just to swap order, Sam, if you want to give that a go first, feel free. But I'll give you a second to think.
I can talk about flood mitigation.
Alright.
So I'm very pleased with the plan that we've developed. And I hope, the dangerous part is we'll get funded. And that money still seems to exist. As far as we know, it hasn't been retracted. It's actually in the state. So I'm hopeful that we can do those three things. That would be removing the trestle. At least temporarily removing Berlin Street Bridge and putting in a pedestrian bridge. Raising Willie Street Bridge and lowering the flood plain right in front of where Willie Street Bridges, so that the river has someplace to go besides building over into, you know, essentially back way through Sixth Street. So I think the plan is great. I think the science behind it is very solid. I think it could make a huge difference for people who live in that neighborhood. And it would make it possible to really rebuild and restore and say, "This is a safe place to live now." So I'm excited about the flood mitigation. And I think that, that I have to thank our city manager for all the hard work he's put in to bring the river, the river folks back again and again. To refine the plan, to make sure we have the thing that would have the most impact. There are other, obviously, other things we could do, but as a start, this seems really promising to me.
Great. Thank you. Beth?
Well, I think that I'll talk about, that I'll start with the New Berry building and maybe I'll get to cameras. But the New Berry building, recently I was involved in the opening session and the closing session of the downtown planning. And I thought the consultants did a really good job of encouraging people to, you know, think outside the box and talk about what would work. And there were a lot of people who wanted to see you walkable downtown and, you know, all the rest of that stuff. I guess the question was sort of like, is this an example of what the public-private partnerships that you're talking about? And the consultant said, "Well, it could be, but what we absolutely don't want to do is tear it down until you have a plan for what you're going to do with it." Which is, yes. That's what I've been saying, because I've seen, you know, I grew up in Rochester, New York, when urban renewal was a thing. And they tore down a lot of stuff that was, you know, substandard housing or old warehouses that weren't used. And it was years and years and years before anything went in that was, that was not a vacant lot. And I, I just don't think that would be helpful. The other piece about the New Berry building is the process for the decision the council made was not a very good process. There was very little opportunity or maybe no opportunity for public input until the second meeting, at least I certainly hadn't heard anything about this, until the second meeting when the council, the task that was laid out before the council was you're going to have to redify the decision that you made in a closed-door meeting before. And at that point, a lot of people raised some really pretty significant questions and some significant strategies about other things to do before you pay a landlord who's basically, you know, a deadbeat landlord. He's not maintaining his building. It's been empty for how many years? You know, before you pay him way over the assessed value, using money that might more realistically be targeted to some other infrastructure needs that would benefit more people. The other, you know, comment that I keep hearing from people about the New Berry building is, "How can they spend $400 of that money when the potholes are, you know, they're not fixing them off?" Yeah, you know, so a process that would have earlier brought people's, you know, attitudes and opinions in and had a chance to talk about it. And maybe, you know, how the Berry Area Development people speak fire a little bit about coming up with some specifics about what, you know, what's going to happen and who's going to pay for it. And there was nothing in the proposal about who pays for the teardown, who pays for the inevitable cleanup. I mean, there've been two floods with raw sewage in that basement and nothing done. If that isn't a super fun site, I'm not sure anybody's doing their homework. You know, so, you know, so there were a lot of problems with that. And I saw similar, this is where it ties into the cameras. I saw a similar lack of early input in that, you know, that because at council, the question was raised, was asked, "Did you look at other vendors?" And the answer was, "No, we didn't. You know, we've had this vendor, but, and we talked to other municipalities that have this vendor and nobody has had any problems." And, you know, my kind of little red flag went, "Oh, please." You know, because getting multiple bids is sort of basic fiduciary responsibility, best practice. And here, here we were at the decision point where council was going to have to decide about the cameras, one way or the other, up or down. And then the other part of it was the, you know, the question really sort of got framed as, either you're going to do this because the police and the business owners want it, or you're not going to do it because there are a bunch of these leftover nut jobs who think it's a bad idea. And that's a divisive process. And this, I would want to see a process where we all, you know, put our input, elicited a lot of information. We got the, the tech people who, who point out the problems with the vendor, involved in the conversation earlier. We look at several vendors and decide, "Maybe this isn't that best choice." But we don't know it's the best choice yet. And if these, if all of these objections are addressed, then the people end up feeling more comfortable with the decision that gets made. And that's really important. We might have made exactly the same decision, but the energy around it would be very different. It would be uniting energy rather than divisive.
Thank you for that. Great response. Sam, I know I put you on the spot and made you come up with a response on this very lofty question first. So no pressure if you don't want to add to that, but I did want to come back to you in case you had some more time to think about any recent issues.
I think the issue of crime in Berry is so complicated. And it's complicated because Berry City is reaping those decisions that it has made earlier. We've surrounded the city with empty, dark parking lots. We haven't built the housing we need for people. Some businesses are excellent employers and some are not. And people can work and work, they're never going to make a living wage. So all those things fuel a kind of depth of despair. And, you know, across the state, there isn't enough drug treatment. You can't easily get that. You certainly can't easily get something that's always effective. So, yep, there's some increase in nuisance crimes. I believe that is correct. There's a decrease in violent crimes. I think that is also correct. But the reality is, without thinking about how we construct a city that has adequate housing and decent, high-paying jobs and, you know, the streets are walkable and they're not surrounded by dark parking lots, that would make a difference. We can't do that overnight. I don't really have a huge problem with security cameras. I know that other people do. What I worry about is poor people who are the victims of crime. And because they are not respected by the powers that be, they're not going to be listened to. Cameras could potentially, and no, no one else thinks that, but I think that.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to cameras necessarily. I, I was opposed to the process.
The process was not great.
You know, and I think that's one of the things that I need, you know, I would need to say about myself is that I don't have a lot of, you know, sort of issues that I have a stance I can't hear anyone else on. And there are things that I hold, that I'm very passionate about. And they're kind of basic. They're like, "I believe," and remember, I'm an Episcopal priest. Every single human being is a beloved child of God. And I further believe that it's my responsibility to treat them that way. It's not always, it's not always possible, but I do try. And that works out into, you know, builds out into the community is being, recognizing that the people who are having the problems, the people who are not supported by the community are still our neighbors. They're still people that we're required to be responsive to and that we're called to be compassionate toward.
They are our community.
They're our community, absolutely. They are our neighbors. Yep.
Well, I so appreciate you lifting up some of these challenging issues that Berry City is facing. And of course, I do want to pivot and talk about what Berry City is doing right. So I'd love to know what you both love about this place. Either of you can start.
Okay. I love, I met some extraordinary people in Berry City. Just their devotion to the city, their ability to come forward and work and be committed and come up with ideas and, you know, often get battered down. And they still keep coming forward. That, they have wonderful ideas. They do great research. They show up. They keep showing up. And what I love is that I have people I can disagree with. I mean, that may seem like that's a trivial point. It's not trivial at all. It's important to have people you respect enough so you can come back and forth with conversations about issues that you disagree on, because that's the only way the issues get resolved, if you can keep talking about it. If you keep saying, "I see this." No, "I see this." How can we work out the different things we see and come together? So the, the passion of the community, the intelligence of the people who are working to make Berry a better place. And the things that have sprouted in Berry City that never would have believed could have made it to the mainstream. Like when the Rainbow Bridge Community Center opened, I thought, "Oh, my God. We're going to have to have full-time guards there." But, you know, I was sitting there once for a poetry reading and people started walking by the open window. And I was like, I was waiting for someone to throw stuff. And I thought, "Okay, we're not there anymore. This place has made it? This is a real stick forward, not just for Berry City, but for any small city in Vermont." So the things that have happened, floxies and AR and just all the wonderful stuff that's now on mainstream. So I, you know, I used to go to a gonk whip and I thought, "Oh, I breathe differently here. It's like being in the woods. Like being in a gonk whip is like being in the woods. I can be totally who I am and, and completely comfortable." And it's pretty much like that now in Berry City. People like me, people who are different, can be here and be comfortable. That's extraordinary.
About, that's tough to follow up.
Yeah, it is, but, but I'll make a try. But I love Berry. I love many of the things that Sam just so eloquently expressed. I love the community. And I think that it's important to recognize that Berry's been an, um, an understanding place for a long time. And I'll tell you a story. Years ago, this was when we were first, so thirty-five years at least ago, when we were first in the, when I was first in the community. I, I was attending Good Shepherd Church in Berry. That's the stone Episcopal church that does the work, that helps with the warning, warming shelter and does breakfast and has a very active role in, you know, the, the helping part of the community. But I remember going, you know, and it was a different time. And people came to church more dressed up than so forth. And there was a person in our congregation who was what we called then a cross dresser. And, you know, there would be a different term for that now, I think, in a much different world, but is more accepting of trans people. But I remember that Bill used to come to church dressed in nice pantsuits. And there was a lady in the church who was sort of the archetype of proper. And she was also the archetype of hospitable. And she was wonderful. I loved her very, very dearly. But I remember that I, I came into the parking lot and got out of my car, my rubbery little car. And she was getting out of her car at the same time that Bill was getting out of his car. And Bill was wearing a very beautifully tailored pink pantsuit with pink flats and a purse and a little buck. And, and I saw this other person and she looked at him and I thought, "Oh, dear." You know, and she said, "Oh, Bill, you look so lovely today. And pink really is your color." And I thought, "Well, not me over with a wet fish." This is, this is amazing. This is amazing. I mean, I, I was thinking that, you know, Cambridge, Massachusetts was sort of, you know, my, you know, the place where everybody, you know, where nobody bats an eye at the guy who walks his duck on a leash. You know, and here I was in Berry, in the parking lot of an Episcopal church with Madame Proper and somebody who's, you know, kind of out of the, out of the common way, shall we say. And it was all fine. And that's, in a way, that's Berry in a nutshell for me. That, you know, and it's, it's a longstanding tradition. I remember when Rainbow Bridge opened too, because they were, they asked, we did, this brother group that I play with did a benefit concert for them. And I remember Shauna wanting to know, they don't, he's saying, "Shauna, I want you to come and talk to people about this." And Shauna's saying, "It's not really going to be okay. It's a church." "It's an Episcopal church. We have visions. It'll be fine." And so she came and talked and it was wonderful and everybody was accepting. And this month, Rainbow Bridge, when they were just getting parked around. Those are things I really love about Berry, but it is, you know, it has that. And a lot of really interesting people who have a lot to offer. A lot of powerful lived experience as well as intelligence and compassion.
Absolutely. And I'd say that these stories are also very powerful and valuable. And I think they'll be very meaningful to the folks that are tuning in to see what you have to say. So thanks for sharing. We're nearly closing out here, but I'm going to ask you perhaps the hardest question so far, which is what is your favorite place in Berry City and why? And if you can't pick just one, that's okay, but the question is just asking for your favorite.
That is really hard.
It's really hard. Well, I can go. My favorite place, I actually do too, but my favorite place is the Church of the Good Shepherd. I feel very at home there. I've had a long history here. And my second favorite place is the library, because I also have a lot of connections to that. And, and they're, they're wonderful civic institutions that are absolute treasures. And the op-house is on the two books.
You did say one. I'm not giving you three, so I'm going to overachieve it that way.
Sam, how about you?
I would say the library is my number one, at least. It's gorgeous. You know, it's not just a place that has books, which are one of my favorite, some of my best friends are books, but it's also physically a gorgeous place and very calming, you know, very calming. And they can, the library contains everybody. It really does contain everybody. It's such an extraordinary institution to walk into Aldrich. You know, everyone is truly welcome. They don't hesitate. My second favorite place, I like the cow pasture a lot. My second favorite place, I like the cow pasture a lot.
Yes, that's a good one.
And I like the woods that are sort of out there privately developed off Prospect Streets. It's a gorgeous place out there.
Well, you've got some good places we can go check out after this. All right. Last but not least, why should voters choose you?
I'm a really good listener and I love to hear from people. And I have a core values, like I hope everybody who does it, I believe in strongly. But people can change my mind. So it's worthwhile to talk to me. I also, um, I'm strongly committed to a place that is better for everyone in Berry. And that's benefits everyone in Berry. If you lived up, everyone who's struggling and you think about what are the supports they need? And what can we do about it? That's going to help everybody.
Viewer in mind where I go for you. And for me, I would say I have a lot of energy and a lot of new ideas and a lot of experience dealing with interpersonal process. And if people really want to see some of the changes that I talk about, you know, a community that's more cohesive, that's like, you know, a political process that's less divisive. And a community, you know, I really do want to see us make a community that is good for everyone, as Sam ultimately says. And I have some of the skills that I think will help do that. So that's why I want you to vote for me. And I am an independent thinker and I'm also quite willing to listen. And I, I can change my mind too. But, but I, you know, but I, and I have things that I feel strongly about and I'm willing to share those with people. And I'm also willing to listen to what you think. And, um, and really listen, really hear it. So I also encourage, I encourage you to be in touch with me and, and tell me what's important to you. Because as I said earlier, one of the things I want to see is I want to see the community be able to set its own priorities. Rather than relying on a, a small cadre of people who, you know, who I do believe have the best interest of Berry at heart, but maybe don't have as wide a vision as it may be right now.
Well, well, Beth, Sam, thank you both so much for this conversation.
Thank you. Thank you for doing this.
I've learned so much just in this past, I don't know, 20, 30 minutes. So really glad that we could sit down and do this. And I wish you both the best of luck this election season.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We've been talking about why we're running for council. And we, your part is that it is really important to vote. I am running in Ward Three and Beth is running in Ward One. And the things that we do will make a difference. Please vote on May 13th at the auditorium. Or?
Or if you have absentee ballot, drop it off. Either before the, before the 13th at the city clerk's office or on the 13th at the Berry Auditorium between the hours of 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM.
Your voice counts. We need you.